Provide for you the time that you take in communicating with community members, the staff members, with the administration, that you dedicate to being on committees and participating in meetings, and all is very greatly appreciated. So, we have certificates for each of the board members today, and I will bring those by if that's okay, and Dana and Alex are not able to be at the meeting with us, but we'll make sure that they get their certificates as well. So, first, for President Laura Horace. For Dr. Hannigan. Janine Radke. Jennifer Stanley. And again, Alex and Dana, Alex Wallace, Vice President, Dana Hannigan, thank you for your service for our community.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. And do we have Glenda, who's going to handle wrapping my things for wrapping?
Yes, Glenda is on Zoom as well.
I am extremely honored tonight to recognize Steve Hordy. Steve was in the curriculum chair when I started at Garden City, and he helped guide me my first few years there at KJ, very grateful. Then watched him go to the high school and take on the lead role there eventually. He has grown in his capacity as a leader, and he's demonstrated that every step away at the high school, he does an awesome job with the staff, with the students, builds reports, and it's evident in the atmosphere of the building, and we're very grateful and honored to recognize him as the Region Six Secondary Principal of the Year.
Hey, um, thank you, Glenda. I just want to take a second, if I could, and just acknowledge some folks with this. My name is on the award, but I've never done anything just by myself, most leaders don't. I look at this as a team award. I'm blessed to work with a great team of administrators, great team of teachers, best kids in the state of Kansas. I'm also really blessed to have the support of Dr. Carlin, LaBarbara, Mr. Hogan, Noel, that whole team at the EFC, to provide whatever we need and to end up supporting. And also really blessed to work with, I've been blessed both at the EFC and the Garden City High School, to work with some great school boards for the last 14 years and be a part of those teams that have been working with us. You know, working together, we can accomplish so much for our kids, so much for our community. Each day I get inspired by the work ethic and the dedication that the folks I'm around and our kids, and I'm glad that everyone's work has been recognized in this way across the state. But with that said, my wife is the real MVP, whether it has been traveling, one year we put 11,000 miles on our car going to school events, and we counted to almost 150 different school events, and for every one of those I've been at, she's been right in charge of it. So, in everything I do, she's there too, and so, we're talking about teams, and we're talking about recognition, I want to make sure she gets her share, because if you've never been to an activity where I'm at, it's not far, it's not so far to see her, just right there. So, thank you for all, everyone that's helped me along the way, and thank you for board for taking a little bit of time to recognize us in this way. Thank you.
And Dr. um... Glenda, I believe you're going to be handling parents as teachers as well?
Josh is going to do that one.
Okay.
Actually, I'm doing that one.
Great.
I am, I am super excited to recognize Dana Becker and her P A T staff for winning the Blue Ribbon Award for Parents as Teachers this year. I have had the pleasure of working with Dana for six years when I was the principal at Cardfield, and seeing the continuity between her program and the other programs that we have here in the district, and I'm, I'm super excited, and she's very well deserving of this, and she and her staff have worked really hard.
Thank you, Josh. I could not have ever done this without the 30 years of support from the school board and the superintendent, and definitely KJ. It was a year-long process in preparing to get ready for the Blue Ribbon process, and then after we prepared, it was still another 18 months, going through the self-study and being able to finish this stuff with the help of the seven parent educators, and earning the Blue Ribbon was amazing. It's something you only will hold for five years, and to be able to earn the Blue Ribbon, you have to meet 75% of the 100 quality standards that year, and we actually met 79% of the quality standards out of 100. So, it is not only something special for myself and my staff, but it is a real big highlight for the School of USC 457. I want to thank everyone for all your support over the last 30 years.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Carlin? Well, congratulations and good luck with everything in the future.
Thank you. In four years, we'll be starting this process again.
And I know you'll be able to meet every one of them again, so good luck. Stephanie, will you answer that?
No.
Then I'll take our motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There's a motion by Alex to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Janine. Is there any discussion? Stephanie, will you call a roll? Laura?
Aye.
Dr. Hannigan?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Mr. Norby, I think you're up again with the A C T update.
Yeah, Crystal and I, Crystal Simonson and I are going to present that. Crystal's going to share her screen, and then she's going to start the things, and then I'll finish up.
Okay, are you seeing the presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. So, this is a review from last year when Steve and I presented on the A C T data. The first couple of slides are review, just kind of talking about how the A C T is formatted and what it looks like for students.
So, we'll go over just general information and format of A C T. We'll talk about our administration timeline, so how we've gone over the, how we've gone over the years with administering the national one, and then now the state one. We'll also talk about our participation rate, and then our comprehensive A C T data. I'm giving an echo, are you guys hearing me? Okay. All right, perfect. Okay, so the A C T is a college entrance standardized test. It covers five core areas, English, math, reading, science, and then also has a writing component, which is optional. The biggest, I'm sorry, the A C T assessment that we give on campus does not have the writing piece with it. And then each session is composed of multiple choice, and the total testing time between the four that we administer is about almost three hours, two hours and 55 minutes total. And so, again, there's four components, there's English, math, reading, and writing, and they're all set up with multiple choice. And then on the table here, we just kind of list the number of questions the students have, and then the amount of time. So, English is 45 minutes, and it's 75 questions. Math is 60 questions, 60 minutes. Reading is 40 questions, 65 minutes. And then science is 40 questions in 35 minutes. And then, I don't want to read all the skills to you, but that's just kind of a general list of the content that is covered in those different areas. And again, all of them are set up as multiple choice.
All right, so, the way we've kind of managed things, and this is review also from what we presented last May, I suppose April or May last year, but in previous years, the A C T has been something that students kind of chose to do on their own, that they were paid for on their own, we helped them with test prep and things like that on occasion, but, and tried to do what we could, and we're doing in class in our curriculum, and tried to, tried to design some of it towards the A C T. But then, the state decided in February 2019 that we could administer the A C T for free for any junior who wanted to take the test, and any senior who had not taken it yet. And they decided that at, I guess, the start of the 2018-19 school year, so, when we administered that test, our participation rates, and it was free, skyrocketed, and we learned a lot on that first test administration thing. You know, we learned a lot, some of the students just, you know, hadn't necessarily taken the college prep material in school, the college prep, their coursework, some students were struggling a little bit with, it was the first time they'd ever done a stand con, first time they'd ever bowled anything in, you know, the first time a lot of our kids had ever taken a 40-minute test, then another 40-minute test, then a 60-minute test, then a 45-minute test, and done all that in three hours. And so, you know, we, we really learned a lot from the struggles of the kids going through in February 2019, not just, we learned a little bit about our curriculum, and a lot about our curriculum, and about their prep, but we decided first quickly we needed to put together a plan for kind of what we, what we needed to do that, moving forward, if we were going to continue to offer this free to everyone, and our numbers of taking the test were going to go way up. So, in that summer of 2019, we developed at the high school a plan of helping our students better prepare to sit for the test, using a number of different A C T products and assessments. We had support from Dr. Carlin and Central Office, we're trying to intervene with some things. The state also then began implementing the A C, the pre-A C T assessment for all freshmen for free, to provide us another set of data. So, starting in October 2019, we administered the pre-A C T for all juniors to help them prepare, to take the actual A C T, to get them a baseline score, to practice taking a standardized assessment, to let them know kind of where they were at skill-wise, so they knew how to prepare for the actual assessment. And then we also administered to Dr. Federal freshmen, to have a data point for all of those freshmen last year, when we knew where we were at academically with those kids, and how to intervene in our curriculum and in our, in our preparation. We also decided as a building that we would start administering an A C T product called the Aspire to students multiple times through the year, so that we could begin gathering actionable data with some intervention practice components for our teachers to be using in class, and for our students to be using if they want to improve where they're at and, and address some of their academic deficiencies, get them some practice, let them know, like I said, where they are as far as their A C T scores and their skills. We actually were only able to get one administration of that assessment last January before then we shut down the school in March, we were scheduled for another one in March and another one in May, but those didn't happen with our continuous learning plan. But before we shut down last March, we were able to offer the on-campus A C T for juniors or seniors a second time, and that one went much smoother, but we still had nearly three fourths of our students sitting for that assessment, so that's a, that's a big number. This year, coming back, we fully implemented our plan, and hopefully we'll be able to fully implement it without another incidence of remote learning back on campus. We gave the A C T to any of the seniors who might have missed the opportunity last year, maybe they were sick when we did the A C T administration, and there wasn't a makeup day, so we let them have that opportunity. We gave the pre-A C T to juniors again, and the freshmen, and then we also administered the first round of A C T Aspire tests, this time for freshmen and sophomores, so we could track the progress of the sophomores, who first started with the Aspire test last year. Now, we're able to continue gathering data on them and hopefully see progress. You know, this week, we are, we are administering the second of our Aspire test for freshmen and sophomores. Once again, we hope we see some gains through this year, from our October testing to our May testing. And then in February, we have the actual A C T that we plan to give to, I think, right around 300 students again, for our juniors, and then we'll have another administration of the Aspire. So, we have really taken in the last year and a half or so a group proactive approach to the A C T in our school. We learned a lot in, in February 2019, and we're trying to, trying to improve what we're doing for kids and then give them a good opportunity, the best opportunity we can be successful. We've been working with our staff on how to read the data, how to use the data of pre-A C T, the real A C T, and the Aspire. Our PLDs are working hard to take a look at our instructional data, and we offer the free A C T Academy test prep to all freshmen and juniors, try and get them opportunities to, to improve their scores. Starting in, the end of this month, we will be having weekly A C T prep study sessions during the winter for all juniors who are, are interested in studying, studying for those sessions. We will be offering them, Mrs. Armstrong will be offering them through the Career Center, and she'll have sessions, general sessions on how to take the test, and then she'll break it down for each of the four subsections that Crystal described. There'll be one section for each of those on how to improve your math score, how to improve your reading score, how to improve your, your science score. And then, we incorporate those, the data from the pre-A C T and the A C T with our individual plans of study, so that students can take a look and see they have a career path that they're really interested in, that their, their academic preparation, that their A C T score matched with the career that they say they want to pursue, and what they want to do to move forward. So, as you can see here, this is kind of a, this is a graphic of how many more students have taken it in the last two years than its traditional course. You know, in the class of 2020, almost three-fourths of our students sat for the, the A C T. That's a much higher percentage of our students than actually report going off to college. So, we had a lot of students, the data would say that just, hey, this is a free test, I want to see how I might do on the A C T. Just take the test. And that, you know, that seems, we're offering it for free, and I want to encourage anybody to challenge themselves, and I'll never discourage students from taking it. But you take a look, the state's scores kind of look a lot like ours. They have seen a dramatic, over the last two years downturn, both from the state and our local store, local scores. The state's scores were down just under one point, ours were down a pilot, just over one point from last year to this year. The areas that we struggled in the last couple of years, since we've had so many more kids taking it than any reading, those scores have gone down considerably. And talking with the kids and debriefing with some of the kids, they said the reading section was the hardest section on the test. They really, they came out of the reading section feeling, wow, that's hard. And so, like, the English section is a lot of grammar, it's a lot of sentence structure, it's a lot of punctuation, and our kids really struggled with that. One thing we have seen a lot more in the last two years is a lot of students in our ESL programs taking this test, needing translation dictionary and extra time and those accommodations to take the test, and of course, you know, if you're needing a translation dictionary, you may struggle with English and reading, that's, you know, a pretty safe assumption. So, you know, our scores, you know, a lot of ways here, the state's scores, the state's scores dropped considerably, and so did our, so did ours in the last couple of assessments. The numbers of kids throughout the state are taking the assessment, taking it for free, getting that opportunity to challenge themselves with this assessment, you know, their scores have not ended up in a, in a good direction. So, that's once again why we are trying so hard with a lot of our intervention, a lot of our intervention techniques, a lot of our intervention programs, trying to hit the kids with their freshmen, using the pre-A C T, using the Aspire freshman year, sophomore year, test prep in the junior year, trying to make an impact with them over that, over the last couple of years. Have a question for everybody.
I have one. Mr. Norby, I know there's been some discussion about colleges and their A C T scores and changing some of those things that are requirements, could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, there has, and it's been really interesting to me in the last couple of years to see the change from our state board of regions and our local community's colleges. When we went to college, those of us on the Zoom, the A C T score was, you had to have it. I mean, you didn't think about applying to a college without it. And now, as far as state teams in school, the only one that really requires it is KU. You don't need an A C T score to get into four-day state, Wichita State, Emporia State, Pittsburgh State, Tate State, you don't need one. They're going to take your high school GPA. The research that they've seen says your high school GPA is a much better indication of your college success than A C T score. Our community college, for those of you who had students go through, children go through, that want to take our dual credit at Garden City High School, if you had to have it, ask you place your score, which is an A C T product, or if you had to have an A C T score to get into college English, college algebra, those kinds of things, now it's a GPA, they use GPA formula, slide and scale, and so, a lot of our colleges have really, lack of a better word, de-emphasized the A C T as a college entrance exam, which for me has been really interesting, our, our state is providing it free for all of our kids, and I want to encourage our kids, you want to challenge yourself and take the test, do it, let's go. But yes, if you get a seven on it, which our kids did, that really struggled with the preparation and the languages, it's still worth it. So, yeah, that's really, it's been interesting for me to see the last couple of years and deal with it as a school leader, that shift from our college.
Yeah, I'm sure it has, thank you for that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
This is Dana, Nancy Clayway. I just wonder if you would still find the A C T and A C T scores to be another way to measure whether or not, you know, to kind of keep ourselves in check with, are our classrooms offering the rigor that they need to, and even like, maybe looking at curriculum or other things? Do you still find value?
Absolutely. That's, you know, I still believe, I want to encourage every kid to prepare themselves and challenge themselves and to, and to take that, take those courses that are going to be part of the A C T, what they call the core, you know, take that as a class, challenge yourself that way. But, and, and I do believe that it's, it's a great piece of data in the overall scheme. We've got our screeners that we use, we've got Fastbridge or whatever, we, that's why we have invested so much in the A C T Aspire product, you know, just giving the freshmen and the sophomores the A C T Aspire. I don't know how many of you guys know a lot about the A C T, but they're not doing this for free. It costs a lot of, not a couple of lot of money to give all of our freshmen and all of our sophomores the A C T Aspire, so we value that data, we value that look. And so, we as a high school committed, you know, committed money for a couple of years ago, that you hear Dr. Carlin, he gives KJ, he helps us find the money, and they supported us getting that paid for on the district end. I think it's a great set of data, and as far as on the curriculum piece data, we really do, teachers and administrators at the high school value it, that's one of the reasons we selected the English Language Arts Curriculum at the high school that we did and implemented just starting last year, just because it was produced by the college board. Spring board is made by these folks that are really invested in the A C T and the, the SAT, and so, it's got that, that component in there, and that's one of the real reasons that our teachers really advocated to have the springboard curriculum that we just started implementing, absolutely. We saw our kids struggling on this and, and really wanted to make sure that we were giving them what we could with our, with our curriculum.
Can I ask one more question on that Aspire? So, now that we've had a couple of years with it, does it, and have some comparative data, will it show you the weak spots?
That's our hope, yeah. We've actually, we were able to offer it, implemented one time last year before we shut down, and now one time so far this year. We're hoping that the next couple of administrations that we are able to do, we've got a winter one that we're doing now, and then hopefully a spring assessment, that after a couple of times doing this, we can really find some pattern, you know, saying, hey, this topic is something we're, we always struggle with, or, you know, we are always struggling in English Language Arts, what can we be doing here? We're always struggling in this area of math, what can we be doing here? And so, yeah, that, that's hopefully the end goal is, is now that we have two data points, we're able to see some things. Geometry, for instance, is an area that we've identified as a concern in our first couple of assessments. We're hoping as we keep doing this, we're able to get some more really good, actionable information from it.
Great. Thank you, Steve, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
Madam President, I may, may have a couple of comments. So, um, first, thanks, Steve and Crystal for, uh, this report. And, I mean, obviously, we'd like to see better scores with our A C T results. Um, I think, you know, historically, we've been a little below the state average with our A C T results. And Dana's question is, is spot on. There is, um, there's a great deal of value in the information that this gives us. I think one of the things that maybe is, is a piece that helps a little bit with the understanding of this is when the state, um, began to offer this, uh, had no charge of kids. And I think we have some data on this and we'll get that, share that with the board and write. Um, they measure how many kids have taken a curriculum that prepares them for taking the A C T. And I would tell you probably in the years leading up to this, we were pretty close, if not right on, with the number of, uh, of our students, a percent of our students, right about what the state had. Somewhere in the seventy to seventy-five percent range of kids who took the test had taken a curriculum that would allow them to be prepared to be successful on the test. When we expanded this to allow many more people to take the test, one of the things I think we've found here is that many of our kids that took it had not taken a curriculum that would prepare them to be successful for the test. I would say that number might be even close to cut half of where it was. So while seeing our scores go down, it's probably not something that couldn't be predicted, given the fact that these kids haven't made choices to take the courses that would prepare them to be successful. Now, I tell you this not because that's an excuse, but because that tells us what we need, what we need to work on to make sure that kids can be more successful. So in addition to the student level data that Steve is talking about, uh, that, that we'll give with aspire, we also can focus a little more generally on are kids who are going to want to take the A C T, do they understand in, as they start making course selections, maybe even as early as seventh or eighth grade, in the value of taking challenging and rigorous courses as it leads to prepare them to take the A C T? Because you don't get a good score on the A C T by doing a test prep the week before the test. You get a good score on the A C T by having a, a solid sound foundation through all of those years. So, um, while the numbers aren't probably exactly what we would, would love to be reported tonight, the data, like Steve said, it is, it is actionable information. It is stuff that there's value for us. And I don't know that Steve even able to speak to this, but I think if we look at this, I think we would find that our number of kids that chose to take the A C T is considerably higher, the, the additional kids, than what probably was seen in most other Kansas schools. Steve, is that, am I accurate in that? That we had a higher number of our kids choose to take this?
Yeah, I know, uh, I mentioned perhaps last May, but in last year, I don't, I don't have the year's numbers quite with me, but I know off the top of my head, last year's numbers, uh, participation. The state has an additional six hundred kids that can take the A C T from last year's senior class. We had sixty more than normal. So really, about ten percent of the overage are additional kids in the rest of the state came from Garden City. So we were more, I think, than holding our own, uh, as far as having more kids taking the test than in a lot of other places. And then that's, that's great. Uh, like I said, I'm not gonna, I could never discourage a kid from thinking, challenging themselves and, and let's see, let's see what you got and, and let's, let's work at it. Uh, and so, yeah, and, and to Dr. Carlin's point about taking the A C T core, uh, data from recent years for Garden City seems to point to the, A C T will write this down for us in our report. Kids that took the core score a point to a point and a half better on average than kids that didn't take the core. So if more kids would be taking the core courses, they, what the A C T calls the core, which don't necessarily match up with their graduation requirements, but if they would, um, yeah, our scores would go up considerably because as, as I said, our kids that take the core score a point to a point and a half better on average depending on the year than the kids that don't report taking the core.
Anything else, Dr. Clay?
No, just, just a reminder that A C T results are always reported by the senior class. So this data is reflective of the class of twenty twenty. So those students that have taken the A C T that are in the class of twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two that are seniors or juniors now, this data does not report their performance in the class of twenty-one.
Another quick question. Uh, A C T scores are still a big factor in, when kids are trying to pursue financial assistance. Is that right?
Yes. Yeah, A C T scores can be valuable for kids going for competitive colleges. Uh, also entrance to a lot of our K P A T schools are, you know, Kansas Westman or Ethel or Southwestern, any of those schools with K P A T. Uh, their financial aid is based on a slide scale of A C T score to grade point average. So you've got to have an A C T score to get some financial aid from those schools. Uh, it's the state schools and our community colleges that have kind of backed away from using A C T for entrance.
Thank you.
Something interesting that we didn't talk about in our presentation is, um, A C Ts now, I believe this year, we're, they're calling it a super score. If I take the A C T and don't care for my math score, I can go back and take just the math portion. And A C Ts basically will take the highest score from each subject and then that will be my complicit. So that's, so that's really exciting. Um, that if they don't like one section, they can go back in and try to get higher scores in that section.
Which goes to, which goes to, and directly to that now, uh, that goes to why they don't report the scores until the kids are graduated, because those scores are always a work in progress. Any student can retake and retake and retake. Of course, you know, take it two times, three times or more, trying to get a certain score to get to a certain scholarship level or are just personal pride. I want that certain, I'm going to keep taking it until I get a certain score or, or whatever their individual score may be.
So Steve and Crystal, can we anticipate with students unveiling themselves of that, uh, that target for a super score, uh, that might change some of these numbers as well as we move into the future? Okay, true.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, uh, I try to encourage all the students, you know, to set a target for themselves. And if, if they don't necessarily like what they scored as a junior, you know, keep trying to make the effort. Uh, and, and if you, if you've invested it that much and you've taken it once, you know, keep, keep pushing and trying to, trying to improve your score. Uh, and, uh, I guess that make that, make that kind of commitment investment.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, this, Alex, I do have a question. How much, uh, what percentage or how much can we use the A C T to change our curriculum to get better scores with A C T in the future?
Good question. Um, I know especially in, uh, the department that I had at the high school, I can speak directly to that, the math department, we take the breakdown of skill, the, the breakdown of scores, I guess, and the particular content, and we look at that each year so that we know our students struggled in, in, uh, statistics and probability. So what do we need to do to address that? We struggle, students struggle in geometry. What do we need to do to address that? Uh, so we're really taking a look at that each year. Uh, we all know, as I, as I mentioned earlier with Dana's question, uh, we're selecting curriculum, especially the Language Arts Department, most recently specifically developed to address those skills.
So along that, does that, how often, and you might have covered this, forgive me, but how often does the A C T update? Do they update every three or four years based on students' performance or students' needs with the, the current environment of the United States or of the states? Or how do, how do they update that? Their, their testing, their information is just being over.
Uh, as far as, as far as I know about the content of the A C T, the standards that they set are pretty constant. And the standards have been, our, our math teachers, for instance, I know they've got posters in their classrooms that basically does outline, here are the, here's the A C T content. And they live by a lot of them. And so, uh, the standards don't necessarily change themselves, but, uh, A C T has kind of changed the practice in administering the test a little bit. As Crystal said, now they've gone to the super score. That hasn't been a reaction to what they feel that the schools and, and its families want. And so they've done a lot more changing in that direction. You can take the A C T on computer now. And so they've changed a lot more in how the test is given than necessarily the standards. The A C T standards have been the A C T standards for quite a while.
So just going back earlier on the timeline and the scores that we had from Garden City compared to the state, the composite, so from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, if you will, those standards or that material, um, content hasn't changed for the A C T at all?
The standards have been pretty consistent. They, they really have, uh, now they, of course, change some questions every year and things like that. But, but at most parts, the standards have had the standards.
And Alex, you're hitting on a really good question. You know, another part of that is the, the A C T standards are not the same as the Kansas standards. So what we're accountable for in our state assessments does not match the A C T exactly. The, the A C T is designed to be a measure that predicts a student's ability to be successful in college. And the Kansas standards are really more of a criterion, content-based standards that relate to the different subject areas. So that's one of the challenges that our teachers face is there's, you know, certain things we're instructing for, uh, to promote success when our students take state assessments. And there's certain things that are instructed for that relate to success on the A C T. So there, there, and, and again, the idea is not every kid's going to go to college. And so, um, which is totally fine. Um, but so how do you, you know, how do you walk that fine line of preparing kids for both? So that's a really good question.
So does the state school board, do they try to, with the A C T, do they try to parallel one another as far as content? Or are they just pair them as an item tester? You know what I mean, as far as content in our assessments?
So, so historically, Kansas has set their standards independent of, of what the A C T is. You might remember a year or two ago, there was a little bit of discussion on the state school board about changing our state assessment to use the A C T. And that, that really didn't go anywhere. Kansas felt like that should be more of a state decision as far as what we wanted our kids to learn and be able to do. And so the state board didn't want to, I guess, kind of cede that decision to A C T to make that decision. Um, so there's, there's that, that difference between the two.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Norby. Thank you, Ms. Diamond. Appreciate your time. Mr. Guyman?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, thanks for the opportunity to share this stuff and, and, uh, thank you.
Have a good evening. Mr. Guyman, I think you have some spud changes and updates you want us to hear about?
Yeah, just an update on some, uh, some, some of our numbers from last year at this time. Let me share my screen here. Are you guys able to see it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, uh, just kind of an update on, on special education and where our department is, um, at this point this year. So, uh, currently we have one thousand one hundred and fifty-one students on I T's in the district. Uh, two hundred and thirty-six of those kiddos are at the high school, twenty-three at the alternative center. Uh, I'm not going to read all those numbers to all of you, but, uh, you can see that we've got quite a few kiddos all over the place. A couple of things that I would point out, uh, the Broncoster coffee shop, we have the zero next to that because we kind of sidelined the coffee shop this year due to COVID, uh, with the hopes of opening it up again next year. And then, um, the juvenile detention center, that's a zero. I, I will say that all of these numbers were based on our, uh, our December first count. So December first is kind of a, a magical number in special education land. That's, uh, that's our data collection day where we have to report all of our data to the state as far as, uh, student I T's. And so, uh, this is all number, numbers based on December first. And, and if I go through the, through the report and, and show comparative data, it'll be based on December first from, from the previous years as well. Uh, currently, we have seventy-eight teaching positions on the book. Um, eleven of those teachers are on waivers from the state of, uh, Kansas State Department of Ed. And so, uh, those are teachers that are, uh, they have a teaching license and they have started another program. They're a master's program to get their masters in special education. They have a plan of study on file and, and, uh, they've completed enough coursework to be out of labor with the state department. And so, um, they're in the process of getting their special education endorsement. We have eight teachers that are teaching out of their content area. And so those are teachers that are licensed teachers that are not, um, certified special education teachers. There's a lot of reasons why they may be teaching out of content. I know we have, uh, a couple of teachers that have completed all their coursework and, and they're ready to go with the exception of taking their practice exam. And so they're just waiting to complete their practices and then get their scores back and then they'll, they'll be fully licensed. We also have some teachers that, uh, you can only be on the waiver for, I think it's three years. And if they've not completed their program or study in that three-year window, then they're no longer eligible for the waiver. And so, uh, those are teachers, they may not, they're, they're still in the process, but maybe are not completely certified. And then I know we do have a couple of teachers who are special education teachers, but their license sure doesn't match specifically what they're, what they're teaching right now. Um, and then we have six teachers that are, uh, six positions that are being filled right now with long-term subs. That number, uh, actually improved one over, uh, over right before break. We hired, we were able to hire one teacher over break. So, uh, we went from seven long-term subs, uh, to, to six and then added one to teachers teaching out of content because that teacher is in the process of looking at getting her program and study started to get her endorsement. So, uh, some of the services that we provide, um, just, just like in the past, uh, B W C or, or classes in a class, uh, we have resource, um, we have resource stuff contained, and then we have our life skills classes. Uh, one of our, one of our, some of our life skills classes have more of an academic focus. Some of them are more of a, a daily living focus. And then we have our functional classrooms for our kiddos that have pretty significant needs. Um, we provide services to our kiddos that attend virtually. Uh, the transition room, we also put on hold this year because of COVID. Uh, and we took that teacher, um, and she's actually teaching some of our remote courses for, uh, for special education. So our hope is to, our hope is that life gets back to normal by the tenth full year starts next year. And, and we'll be able to open up the coffee shop and the, uh, the transition room bolt. And then we have the T E P and the day school is a new classroom that we started last year. And it is growing. We have, uh, I believe we're up to six kiddos in that classroom this year, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you look at the needs of that classroom. So our hope is to, our hope is that life gets back to normal by the time the full year starts next year and, and we'll be able to open up the coffee shop and the, uh, the transition room. And then we have the T E P and the day school is a new classroom that we started last year. And it is growing. We have, uh, I believe we're up to six kiddos in that classroom this year, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you look at the needs of that classroom, that's a pretty significant, um, pretty significant number. So, uh, that's working really well. Uh, our related services, we have six school psychon staffs, so we're fully staffed there. Uh, for the first time in my career as an administrator, I think in the last fifteen years, uh, we are fully staffed with speech psychologists. Uh, we have nine physicians on the books and in, in my career of fifteen years, we have never been fully staffed with nine physicians. I'm hopeful that we stay that way, but we did get a retirement letter right before Christmas, so we've got some work to do, uh, to start the year off that way. Uh, we do have two physical therapists that we contract with. Uh, they give us one day each a week. And then we have a teacher for the visually impaired. Uh, we have one teacher for deaf, hard of hearing. We have two adapt E E teachers. And then we contract with, uh, Kansas State School for the Blind for our, um, orientation and mobility specialists. And then, uh, we also work with Liberal. Uh, we have an audiologist that, uh, they have on contract with Liberal and so we, we have a contract and we get forty days a year, uh, with her as well. Uh, the support staff that we have here at the E S D, um, obviously me as the director and then Damian, Tracy and Mel serve as our, our special education coordinators or TOCs. And then, uh, our, our clerical staff that work in the office as well. Um, we do have two paraprofessionals that work with the school psychologists and they spend a lot of time. And this year has been, it has been, I think, even more so, uh, contacting schools, getting copies of old I E Ts as new kiddos move into our district. They get the records for special education to make sure that our teachers and, and school psychologists have those, uh, so we have an idea of where they need to start and, and what the beginning of their school year looks like, um, with us. Uh, we have five sign language interpreters. We have one occupational therapy assistant, one physical therapy assistant and four, uh, speech, uh, paraprofessionals as well. Uh, this year we have two hundred and ten paraprofessionals that, uh, that are on the books. Uh, ninety-nine of those paras of that two hundred and ten working our more intensive, work with our more intensive kiddos. So they're going to work in the classrooms that are our functional classrooms or self-contained classrooms. Uh, they're going to be one-on-one paras, uh, things of that nature. And as of Wednesday, we currently have nineteen of those physicians that are unfilled. So if you know of anybody that's looking for work, send them our way because we definitely have a physician for them right now. Um, some of the effects of, of COVID, that COVID has had this year on, on special education. So, uh, just some numbers, and these numbers have changed a lot. The first couple of weeks, uh, when parents were still kind of trying to decide whether they wanted to go remote or, or onsite or, or what they wanted to do. To give you an idea, um, right now currently enrolled at Garden City High School, we have twenty-two kids that are fully remote, that are on I E Ts and three students that are blended, um, for a total of twenty-five kiddos at the high school. When we started the year, we were at fifty-eight. And, uh, so those numbers changed pretty drastically as, as, um, as time progressed. The middle school, we have sixteen. The intermediate centers, we have twelve. Elementary, we have twenty-six. Uh, pre-K, we have sixteen. And then we have eight students that are gifted that are receiving remote services right now. So, and, and this, this also is, uh, our projections as of Wednesday of last week. This is the, uh, the data that we collected. So the high school, um, we're projecting that the high school will have twelve students on I E Ts, um, that are, that are going to be remote. So that's a, that's a drop of thirteen that will be coming back onsite. Uh, the middle school, we didn't see any change there. Intermediate center is going to be down to nine, so we'll, we'll, we'll have three that'll be coming back to onsite. Elementary is at twenty-four, so two coming back to onsite. And pre-K is at fourteen and, and two back, coming back to us onsite. And we didn't see a change in gifted either. So we're seeing our parents, I, I think, um, which, which I'm glad to see because our kiddos are, especially our special needs kids, you know, they struggle more so than, than a typically developing kid. And, and having them in front of us and, and able to provide those services, I think is definitely a benefit for them. Um, kind of some trend data to, to kind of show where we're at this year in comparison to last year. Um, you can kind of see, uh, the high school were up twenty-two students from last year, um, on I E Ts. The alternative center were up nine. Uh, the middle schools are down seventeen. The intermediate centers are up twenty-two. Elementary dropped ninety-six students from this time last year. Uh, Garfield is down forty-one. Um, our homebound students, there was no change there. Our parochial schools, we've seen an increase of eleven students that are gaining special education services, um, at our parochial schools. And our, our J D C is, is, um, is zero, so we're down two, which that's a good thing. And obviously our coffee shop, uh, the Broadbuster Coffee Shop, because we don't have kiddo overlap this year. We don't have any comparative data. Um, I, I think one of the things that sticks out the most here is Garfield. Uh, talking to Melanie, Garfield is really the area where we've, where we've seen a significant drop, I think, overall. Um, we're seeing a lot of parents that are, uh, that are coming to us. We're doing the eligibility meetings. The kiddo qualified for special education, but the parents don't want to enroll them right now. They've decided to wait because of COVID. They just don't want to enroll them. And so, um, that concerns me for a few different reasons. Number one, obviously we're seeing a, a decrease in enrollment, so that's concerning. But number two, uh, the kiddos that are, that are going to show up here in a year or two in kindergarten, that we've already identified as having needs. And when they, when they show up in kindergarten, they're going to be even further behind. We're going to have that gap. And so, um, that is concerning for me, uh, as, as we kind of move forward. Overall this year, we've seen a decrease of, decrease of ninety-nine on I E Ts from this time last year. But if you look comparatively for two years, um, the, the data doesn't look so bad. So I went back another year and I looked at the data from two thousand eighteen, uh, December of two thousand eighteen. That kind of gave you an idea. And if you compare where we were in two thousand eighteen to where we are now, the high school is still up thirty-four students. The alternative center is still up eight. The middle schools are up six. The intermediate centers are up forty. Elementary, even though we've lost that many kiddos, is still up twenty-nine. Um, Garfield, like I said, is our, is our area of concern. Uh, we're down twenty-six from where we were two years ago. Uh, our homebound kiddos, and it's, you know, for medical reasons or exposure reasons, are down four, which that's, um, that's, that's good. We want to get them to school anyway. Um, and then our parochial schools are up eighteen and the J D C obviously is down one. So, uh, overall trend data for two years doesn't look quite as bad as it does from, from this time last year. So, um, question?
Hi.
Uh, thank you very much for that presentation. Very interesting and, and generated the question when you talked about, uh, we have nineteen positions for paras unfilled. Uh, and you sort of put a pitch out there. What, what is, what are the qualifications in general for, uh, for paras? What you're looking for?
So, uh, so they have to have a high school diploma and then they have to have, if I'm wrong here, correct me, uh, but in addition to the high school diploma, they have to have, um, an associate's degree. I believe it, is it sixty hours of, if they don't have an associate's degree, sixty hours of college credit? Or they have to take their parapro assessment, which is just a basic form assessment of their, their reading and math skill. Uh, so that's what they have to have to be, be employable for us. But, um, in addition to those skills, Mark, obviously, I, I think you have to have, you, you have to want to work with kiddos and, and you have to have a lot of patience because some of our, some of our kiddos that are working with competology, um, you deal with behaviors and things like that. So I think, uh, patience is definitely important as well.
Hey, thank you.
You have a question?
I have a question.
Dana?
I have a question.
Okay.
And so I have at times heard that, um, getting a child tested for the gifted program can be challenging. Have you, um, what is the case with that? Are those numbers increasing for the gifted program or decreasing?
I, I can't, I can't tell you what they look like from this year to last year, Dana, because I don't have those numbers in front of me. But I can tell you that, that I have seen our gifted numbers increase, um, o- over the past few years. I know, um, from, from my time as a, as a building administrator, we've seen it come up significantly. It is, it is, the, the criteria to qualify for gifted is, is pretty significant because you have to be two standard deviations above, above your peers on the assessments that they take. And so, um, the bar to reach that is, is, is pretty high. Um, but as far as, as getting a child tested and disqualified, there, there's a couple of different ways that that can happen. So if you have parents specifically, Dana, that are, that are interested in or struggling with that, I would encourage you to have them just reach out to me. Um, but, but to qualify or to, to have your kiddo tested for gifted, uh, one is to go through the staff process, which is very similar to what we would do for the students that are struggling. We would create an individual, um, learning plan and we would, instead of creating interventions for those students, we create, um, uh, enrichment, enrichment program for them that they work on. And then we collect data and if we show that they are making adequate progress to that, then the staff team can refer them, uh, for testing. But the parents can also request an assessment and, and so, um, they would just have to write a letter or, or contact me and, and, um, and then what I do from there is I have the school psychologist that works for that building, contact the parents and kind of go over what their, what their scores look like and, and, and the school psychologist works with them to talk about what the gifted program is. And, and then the school psychologist also kind of makes the decision on whether we need to move forward with the evaluation.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Guyman. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Barbara, are you going to be starting us on the COVID update?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Hey, we're going to talk about COVID for a little bit. And as you know, one of my favorite things to do is brag on our staff. Um, January fifth, we were back onsite after our little stretch between the holidays of, uh, remote learning. And some of our schools, uh, found real creative ways to welcome the kids back. And this is just a short clip, um, at Bertrand Walker. They made a red carpet and had students and staff enter on a red carpet. So we'll take a look at that one, please. So as you can see, they certainly had fun, uh, bringing the royalty back into the school. So that was a lot of, a lot of fun. Um, some of our other schools, uh, had posters and, uh, that may or may not be, um, Michelle Kent in the unicorn picture there. Um, like I said, the, the schools all had, uh, fun welcoming the kids back. So wanted you to, to see some of the, the stuff beyond that, that you know our staff do all the time. So as we came back, um, last week, we kept track of our numbers. And the first day back, we did see, um, a catch-up to staff that were sick over the holidays for the most part. So ten staff, um, on Monday and almost all of those were, uh, playing catch-up from Christmas break. And again, some more of those trickled in. I, we don't, didn't have very many, uh, geodesic right now. I think there was one total. And then the students, as you see, we had three students last week that were positive. Of course, as you know, there's a kind of a, a lull from the time you may be exposed until, um, you actually start showing symptoms. So today we did see a little bit of that and we had, uh, eight students that were positive today. So we beat all of, of last week's student count, uh, just today. So we may be kicking up some of those, uh, that window there of, of how that installation period. So when we met with the health department on Thursday of last week, there was an increase in new cases, so we did check that off. The outbreak, that is specifically to our school district. We don't have any right now. There was a decrease in hospital admissions, um, and that was under fifteen. So we didn't check either one of those boxes. The I C U beds were still full, so we checked that off. And our positivity rate, if it's over twenty-five percent, we checked that off and it was at thirty-one percent last Thursday when we met. So we had three indicators there and very low numbers. So we were feeling pretty good at the end of the week last week. Um, Michelle's school is going to talk a little bit about our newest project with COVID. Michelle, are you on?
I am. Good evening. Um, I just want to talk to you about a program that we plan on implementing next week. And we're in the process of getting everybody trained. But K D H has partnered with school districts around the state to provide a rapid, rapid antigen test. Uh, there's no cost to the school districts for the test. The only cost to our district is the P T E that's required. Where we currently have an F P T E. So people don't have to purchase any P T E as far as, uh, I can tell. Uh, there are no guarantees how many tests each district receives. Um, we did however, get our test in and we received six hundred and forty tests. Uh, the test available is, uh, called the Biomex Now Rapid Antigen Test. And this test is, gives the street results in fifteen minutes. It looks like a card. Um, it is a nasal swab, but it is not a nasal pharyngeal swab. So it doesn't, it just goes in about an inch into each nostril. And then it slips into a, a card where there's, there's three agents that you've already put into the card. And then you wait fifteen minutes and you read the, the card to see whether or not someone is positive or negative. We test our most reliable and symptomatic individuals. So the state had two strategies that you could select from or you could pick both strategies. Uh, the first one was intended for serial screening of asymptomatic individuals. And the second one was intended as a testing option for individuals who are symptomatic. Um, when we were trying to decide whether or not we wanted to implement this, we, um, brought the health department in to, um, talk about what their recommendations were. And they recommended that we would test symptomatic staff, at least starting out with them. Um, it is an option for us to test students. So if that's something that we decide we want to do, we can. But right now, the option is to test symptomatic staff. Um, like I said, it can still be a, could be a component, but at this time it's going to be the staff. Each school will have their own test onsite. And to do on the number test, we were sent, we were sent enough tests that we will be able to add them in sixteen sites. So almost all of our schools will initially be able to start testing.
Before we let Heath jump into, uh, staffing during COVID, are there any questions for Michelle?
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Ward Heath, O G N W superintendent for those that are watching and listening. Uh, I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about staffing, uh, as it relates to COVID. So having our buildings appropriately staffed is, is one of our factors as we're making decisions on individual building levels, uh, of course, district level as well. Um, and that's, you know, really is driven by the impact in our school community and our community as a whole. So what I'll be really looking at tonight specifically is our substitute teachers. Um, we've kept track of, uh, what we call our fill rate, our ability to backfill physicians when people need to be gone. And prior to the pandemic, uh, our average fill rate was seventy-two percent roughly. Um, currently, year-to-date, this year, it's been fifty-seven percent. So getting substitutes, uh, on a good year, uh, is, is certainly difficult. Uh, but this year, due to COVID and the circumstances and in some cases a higher need for substitutes, uh, has certainly been a challenge. Uh, just other information for you. Uh just other information for you as we've kept track of this. So we we meet every day, talk about needs uh in our district, talking about again, number of staff that's impacted, number of students that impacted, and then also our ability to again, support staff uh in terms of substitute teachers. So our range this year, our our lowest day um at the beginning of the year was thirty-three percent fill rate. And again, think back, seventy-two percent was our average. Uh our high was seventy-two percent. Um however, a little bit misleading, uh we were only at that seventy-two percent uh one day. So we only hit that mark once. So I've given the board a little bit more information about that, breaking it down from the first of August until where we're at with our winter break uh in terms of the number of days, and again, this is based on percentage of fill rate. So in the thirty to thirty-nine percent, we had six days uh that were in those percentages of fill rate. Twelve at forty to forty-nine percent, six at fifty to fifty-nine percent, and additional six between sixty and sixty-nine. And then that one lone outlier, seventy-two percent, that was that was the one day that we had uh in that range. Uh last week, uh coming back January fifth through the eighth, uh we had a huge rebound. Uh and in my chair, when you've gone through the many, many days of thirty percent and and those kinds of things, uh last week was certainly a celebration and we had eighty percent of our requests that we were able to fill. Number of substitutes available, um we do kind of keep track of this, uh have been looking at it throughout the year. Uh we have thirty-one substitutes that that have indicated to us that they would work primarily every day. Um we had sixty-five part-time uh substitute teachers. Uh they may have other jobs. They can only work, you know, a day a week or a couple of days a week. Um could be students that are back from college, as an example, um that have class requirements, those kinds of things. Um and we have eighteen additional subs that have indicated to us that they don't plan to work. I mean, these are people that have worked for us in the past and what we would have on our sub list. And they told us that they don't plan to work uh until COVID is is under control, uh is no longer a concern. Um so requirement to get a sub license, uh this is my shameless plug to the community and anybody that's watching and listening. Uh we are in, you know, again, we are in need of substitute teachers. Uh it's you have to have sixty college hours uh from a accredited university. You have to fill out an application for your emergency sub license with Kansas State Department of Education, um which they have tried to simplify that process uh a lot over the years. You can do it all electronically now. Um you do have to have fingerprints that you send in, a background check. Uh but the staff and the H R office here at the central office uh is very willing and and able to help uh make that process as easy as possible. So if you know anybody that might be interested in doing that, uh please have them contact me uh or or this office and we can get them the support that they need. Um staffing needs in other departments. So I primarily talked about teaching positions. Uh but but there is other impacts and things that we do look at. Um we look at, you know, our nutrition staff and and their ability to carry out the duties of their job and provide meals for our kids. Uh transportation is certainly a big one, plant facility, custodial staff. Um we have, we have a few uh subs in nutrition. Uh we they're like roving physicians. Uh they're considered to be sub nutrition assistants, but they work primarily every day. Uh we have a few custodial subs as well. Uh that number is becoming depleted because as we get positions open up, uh oftentimes, we move those sub custodians into a full-time role. Uh and in transportation, uh we've had at least two experiences um through this first part of the year, um close to the first semester, where there's been two days where we've utilized every available resource that we have in transportation to drive. Um that would include our mechanics, who have their C D Ls as well. Uh all of our office staff have their C D Ls, uh with the exception of the director. And and on those two days, we didn't have enough people to uh have all the routes filled that we needed to because of sickness, absenteeism, uh that sort of thing. So Charlie, and hats off to him, uh really has to be Johnny on the spot, creative, problem solver. Uh but that's a matter of, you know, contacting parents, uh bus routes that are running late. Uh they have to double up on some routes, uh while they finish one and go start another one. Uh so that staffing is is really, you know, impacting us through through COVID. Recruiting strategies, these are some of the things that we have utilized. Uh again, knowing that this was coming, we've done more to recruit substitutes uh than we probably ever have, uh certainly in my time in this chair and in this office. So these are a list of the things that we did. We've talked to uh building administrators. Um we have somebody that we uh that calls all of our daily call subs. We also have some long-term subs support, uh people in this office. Uh and really just brainstorming ideas how we get the message out. So certainly want to give a shout out to our uh information office, with Roy and Amanda. Um they've been key factors in some of these creative things that they were able to carry out. That first one, um sending out, you know, information through our district's social media. Um you know, we have a very large staff. There's, you know, roughly thirteen hundred employees in our school district and and obviously that has a big impact on our community. So just getting the word out to to people that we work with and saying, hey, if you know anybody, um you know, send them our direction. But other things that we've done is uh putting stuff through the Chamber of Commerce, on their websites, newsletters. Uh again, send it out through district email. We've made contact with uh Garden City Community College, any of their students that uh might be interested. Uh again, as a reminder, typical students through the Juco uh wouldn't have enough hours because you have that sixty college hours to be eligible for that license. But if they had non-traditional students or, you know, somebody that's coming back, something like that, so we we did some advertising through them. Uh just a single ad for substitutes through the newspaper. We didn't want to clutter it with other things. We're always looking for uh plant facilities workers, uh bus drivers, nutrition people, Josh Minton, parent educators. Uh but we just wanted to focus this particular ad on substitutes to try to draw a little more attention to it. Um contacting anybody that's been on our list. Uh typically, you know, there's anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty people on the list. Uh again, that sounds like a nice number, but getting those people to work uh every day i- is a struggle. Like contacting those former subs and and basically sharing uh how important it is right now for them to work for us uh and get some feedback uh from them. Um Buffalo Broadcasting, uh contacting Newman University to let them know that, you know, we needed subs, that they had people that were eligible and looking for some at least part-time work. Uh and then just kind of that getting out and hustling mentality, going to Sam's and Dylan's, uh stopping foot traffic. We have booth setups there to try to draw people's attention to it. Uh and really, it's paid off. Uh the end result, and I can't, you know, attribute all of it to the work that we've done, certainly. But uh we have added twenty-four new subs to our list this year um that have not subbed with us before. So we're pretty proud of of those results. But certainly always in need and and again, I'll get my shameless plug out there that we always need more. Question?
Well, if I can, just a comment. I know that substitutes was actually something Senator Dahl mentioned in the legislative copy on Saturday. Um and the difficulty um with regard to that, so. Um and I know one thing that he's talked about was even some of the overregulations just in general. I mean, I know he was actually specifically talking about, you know, covering semi trucks. But we also talked about daycares too later on. But um I don't know if there's something specific with regard to getting sub licenses that maybe um could be fixed legislatively, that uh might be, could be helped, that might be somebody who could, would be a sympathetic ear for you. Uh especially if there's a timing issue or something like that, maybe somebody you'd talk to. And then um um something along those lines, I don't know, something to look into anyway. Um but I know his complaint was people were wanting to help out, but the cost of just getting a license, that they weren't trying to work through a district necessarily. Because I know we sometimes help out with the cost of the license, or at least help with some of those things. And they weren't going through a district necessarily, but they wanted to help out um just in general. So um I don't know if that's something that we want to try.
Yeah, Laura, I appreciate, I appreciate that and will just add for the board is, you know, this isn't a Garden City issue. Um I don't know that I've spoken to the board about it necessarily, so please forgive me if it's redundant. Um but there's been, there's been lots of conversation about subs uh throughout the state. Uh I do participate in uh an H R Zoom meeting uh every couple of weeks with H R professionals in school districts across the state. And uh it's impacted, you know, everybody. Auburn Washburn, um their H R professional, he started taking out TV ads and and getting on the news in Patika to try to give a shout out. Uh I believe, and I'm probably gonna get to District Rome, but Johnny Missioner, Blue Valley, one of the two of them, they had two hundred and ninety-seven substitutes on their list a year ago. And to start the year off, they were at ninety-seven. So it's it's very impactful and and the impact of not having enough subs, again, why it's one of our factors when we talk about appropriately staffing our buildings, is when we're unable to do that, uh it just puts an extreme amount of stress on everybody in that building. Um from, you know, the the secretaries who might be helping organize that, the administrator who um has to come up with a a plan B, if you will. Um the additional teachers on that team or the neighboring teachers next door that are willing to, you know, give up their plan time. We do compensate them for that time, but it still matters if it's one more thing. Uh and them stepping up to do that. And and honestly, again, shout out to all of our buildings and our staff. Um they were the contributing factor while we were able to do ten weeks of face-to-face instruction. Uh because we were short and we did struggle uh with that uh through that first semester time period. So again, super grateful to everybody that that's worked on it from the recruiting side to to standing up and and taking more responsibility uh just in order for us to serve our kids uh has been amazing.
Any other questions, comments? Has has there been anything done district-wide to help with some of those fees for those sub licenses? Is that something?
Mr. Hogan?
I'm sorry, can you?
Have we helped with the cost on any of the people applying for substitute licenses?
Uh we have been not uh offset any of those expenses. Um so one of, I guess, maybe a piece of thinking is, is that we, several years ago, we did up our uh pay rate for subs, both our daily rate uh and also our long-term rate, somebody that's walking into a position that has remained unfilled. And we are, I'll say, one of the highest uh in our surrounding areas. I actually only know of one of the schools that's paying more for their substitutes than than U S D four five seven. Uh so I guess part of the mentality is if you work one day for us, that that actually offsets all the expenses that you would have for licensure. So we haven't taken that step to do that um as of yet. The other thing that I will add, uh and the board knows, but we do have incentives built in for our substitutes as well. So if they work a certain number of days for us, they get a bonus. And uh so that's an incremental step. So not only do they make a decent wage uh on a daily basis, but once they get to these incremental steps, they also get a bonus from U S D four five seven for, you know, putting in that extra consistency.
Any other questions, Karen? Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us on to um new business um and the K S B legislative agenda. The um delegate assembly for this part is January twenty-first. So um I think just a consensus um on with regard to this was what I was looking for. Um it was attached to the So You May Know and is also part of your board book. Um so if there was anything um standing out with regard to this um as well, um because it could change also um on the twenty-first. So if there's anything on here, um because there is, there's a federal and a state issue package, so. Is there anything that you guys have in mind?
I I just want to say, they looked really consistent uh with their past policy positions and and we've been pretty active in supporting those in the past. Everything from local control to uh you know, continuing in support of some of the special acts. I didn't, I I'm in favor, and I didn't see anything I couldn't support.
I'll let you all know how that turns out, um not the retreat next week, but the meeting after that.
Well, thank you, uh Chair, for that uh that involvement.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to board open discussion. Um while I take over this on Zoom first, um Dana, do you have anything today?
I do not. Thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to everybody who wanted to watch tonight. Thank you for your dedication and hard work and thanks for the presentation um with everybody, everybody presented tonight and people stepped in, so thank you.
Dr. Mannigan?
I do not. Thank you.
Jennifer? Um I just want to thank everybody who were trying to get kids back in school this semester. Haven't heard a lot, but for me and my kids, they're glad we could be back in there. So hope that things went smoothly for everybody.
Janine? I don't have anything that hasn't already been covered, so.
Mark?
Uh nothing much, just echoing Jennifer's comments, a lot of folks in the community coming up and communicating on the excitement to get kids in school. Hope it, hope we can stay there.
Um this is past Saturday, we had the first legislative copy with the chamber. Um and I was um really excited with regard to that and what um is going to be coming on. It was um had more than our usual um group. Um normally in November, we have um a dinner with everyone from Southwest Kansas. Um so and we didn't have that this year. Um so instead, they invited, uh because it's the Southwest um Kansas chambers that puts that on. So um and it's actually the federal and the state. And since they didn't have that, they invited um more legislators to come and participate. So it was nice to see um more individuals who came and um it was by Zoom. It was on Facebook Live, so um it's still on Facebook on the Garden City Area Chamber um Facebook page. So if you have time, um it's about an hour and a half and had some really good conversation and discussion. So if you're um interested, I would encourage you to go and listen to that. Um Senator Dahl was there, Representative Wheeler and Jennings um as well, and then some others. Um trying to remember who all was there.
Board and.
Yeah, Minix.
Yeah.
Um so really good discussion. Um and then after that, um the Government Affairs Committee met with um our local officials um and presented the chamber's legislative agenda. And I want to thank Dr. Garland for participating on that committee and um presented the education section to them. Um and they seemed very receptive with regard to that. So looking forward to seeing what comes up. And I think Representative Jennings is really concerned that this upcoming legislative session may be truncated again. Um and it's going to take a constitutional amendment to be able to have a legislative. to be able to have a legislative session outside of Topeka. So hopefully, we can get some things going to make sure that everything goes well for education. So hopefully, we can get that going. And then February... February twentieth is the next legislative copy. If you want to go ahead and put that on your calendar, and it will be by Zoom and on Facebook Live as well at ten o'clock. And I'm going to be emceeing that one, so if you're interested in watching that one. So if you want to get that on your calendar.
So stop the emcee, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, Chairman, thank you for those comments, and I do want to comment that I thought that format and the emcee and the participation and the level of questions was probably the most informative legislative event I have ever attended. And I think there were a number of comments that very much liked that format. And so I'm kind of excited in anticipation for the twentieth. Because again, it was all of the legislators in southwest Kansas, except maybe one senator. But very well attended, each one of them tremendous amount of information, particularly from their own perspectives of community involvement. And so it was very informative. I certainly thank the chamber and the others that made that possible, and I look forward to the next event.
Dr. Garland?
Yeah, just real quickly, great to be back in school. Echo that, and we've had a lot of happy people blend. Video clip was really just a snapshot, and the happiness is probably at literally every school. Now we just got to stay healthy enough to be able to stay there. So again, just to comment briefly, we're fortunate to have a great group of legislators that represent us here locally, and so having the opportunity to communicate with them about what some of our needs, and great to have people that will listen. And then last, we're starting to get a little more information about vaccines for educators. I know that was one of the questions that was asked at the coffee next to the deal. And educators are still in phase two of Kansas's plan. We, Mr. Hogan and Michelle, will be working with the Health Department this week on kind of putting together a plan for our district. We're not sure when that's going to get to start, but we want to be prepared when we can. So we'll be polling staff to find out how many people are interested in getting the vaccine. Obviously, that's a voluntary piece, but we really think it's a game changer of having that available for staff and for the adults at school. So we're going to be working pretty hard in the next week or so to kind of get something put together so that when we do get the word that it's our turn, we can be as ready for that as possible. That's all I got.
The next meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Tuesday, January nineteenth, 2021, at five-thirty PM in the board meeting room at the Educational Support Center here. And that's actually going to be a retreat, so that's not going to be...
No action.
No action at that board meeting. So, and do we want to take maybe a five, ten-minute break before we go into executive session? How much time do we want to take? Five minutes? Five minutes, okay. And I'm thinking we probably want an hour, but, okay.
There was a championship game on the city.
You know, we've had Randy Brazil here during, you know, the final four.
That's true.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session at seven forty-five for an hour for matters of, for personnel matters for non-elected personnel. And there may be action...
I will just simply salute, as you described.
Okay, and invite Dr. Garland?
Yes, Chairman.
I'll second it. Then invite Janine. Stephanie, do you want to do a roll call?
Aye.
Laura? Dr. Jennings?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
And Alex and Dana, I think there's a different link for the two of you.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Do we need to adjourn this session?
Well, you need not adjourn, you want to adjourn, but you'll have to do the other link.
Right, sorry about that. I gotta head and talk.